Second, 2025. This is a regular session of the School Board trustee of School City of East Chicago. And the time is now 6:10. The place is the School City of East Chicago Administration Building, 1401 East 144th Street in East Chicago, Indiana. This is also being shown via live stream at www.SSEC.K12INUS. This is a meeting of the school board and the public for the purpose of conducting the school corporation's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez.
Present.
Trustee Smith.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Present.
Trustee Taylor.
Present.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Present. May we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will have our mission statement from our superintendent, Dr. Burney.
Good evening. The school city of East Chicago educates and empowers every student through aligned instruction, meaningful partnerships, and differentiated processes, practices, to ensure success in life, college, career, and civic engagement.
Thank you, Dr. Burney. 1.04 is the executive sessions, but I don't have the dates. But the code is 5-14-1.5-6. Can I get the 2.01 approval of the agenda? Are there any comments from the public? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam President, move for approval of the agenda 2.01.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Gomez, second by trustee Rodriguez. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Sorry. Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith? Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. May we do our administrative report? Superintendent Dr. Burney?
Good evening again, school board and School City of East Chicago community. This is my report for July 22, 2025. We are excited to recommend, after rounds of our new hiring and interview process, Dr. Elroy Estes to be the new principal for Lincoln Elementary School. He is an experienced 30-plus-year veteran educator who has a proven track record of securing and achieving student outcomes, both at the elementary level in reading and math gains. We are also enthused to recommend Ms. Catherine Broadnax to be the new district CTE director, who will be responsible for career technical education for our K-12 program. Ms. Broadnax brings a wealth of career technical education and workforce development experience, having garnered lots of community partnerships in industry and commerce, and that experience to the students who will benefit mostly from the school city of East Chicago. Our very own Principal Linda Padilla has been named a finalist for the 2025 Influential Women of Northwest Indiana, Woman of the Year in Education. This is a tremendous honor and a true testament to the impact Principal Padilla has in making not only in her field, but in this community. Finalists are selected not just for their professional excellence, but for their leadership, service, and dedication to empowering others. We are invited to celebrate this incredible honor at the 2025 Influential Women Awards banquet on September 25, that will pay tribute to professional women across 13 industries, including education. We are incredibly proud of Principal Padilla. When you see her, please congratulate her. And finally, our federal funding update. More than $6 billion in funds have already been approved by Congress, but they are being withheld by the Federal Office of Management and Budget, and they cover the following impacted grant programs. Title II, which funds professional development for our teachers and administrators; Title III, which funds services that we provide for our students who are English learners; Title IV, which funds academic enrichment and student support programs. These three funds, under our federal grants, are being withheld, and this is on behalf of the School City of Chicago and my role as superintendent, beseeching our school board of trustees, as well as concerned community members, to reach out to their local legislatures; all of our representatives and senators, to ask them to release these funds immediately so that our students can benefit from Titles II, I'm sorry, our teachers will benefit from Title II, and our students from Title III and Title IV. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Burney. 4.02, we have Executive Director of Business Operations, Mrs. Simmons.
Good evening, board trustees. I don't have a full financial report at this time due to the, I've been working on a little bit more of the HVAC system in the district since I've been back in the district since Monday. I will have a financial report that I can send out to you by Thursday morning of all of the grants and the education fund and operation fund by Thursday morning and be in your email. Update on just some little things that's going on in the district. So Lincoln has fully now has their HVAC unit totally working. Central High School has had a hiccup with the HVAC unit. Our compressor went down, and the compressor is no longer needed with the new HVAC unit. So now I have to find a temporary compressor to go into H Central. So that's what I've been working on for the last two days. I have bathroom renovations going over there that's had a halt up until I can get some air conditioner in that building. And today I finally found a vendor that can actually step in and take over the project. As I was out, there was another vendor handling it, but at that time the vendor was not doing it in a more quickly way that I needed, so I reached out to another vendor today to take over the project. So we are on track now trying to find that temporary compressor so we can get the air conditioner totally going in the high school. We're also starting budget season for 2026. I have met with Mr. Dalton. He's requesting documents for going from this year into next year, so we will have budget resolutions coming up in the month of August. We're also closing out 2425, so I have been working with Nelson this week, these three days, to close out 2425. So it's kind of been kind of busy in the finance that I have not been able to prepare the report, but we're looking to have all the reports done by Thursday morning before I depart. Any questions?
Any question from the board?
Madam President.
Yes, trustee Taylor.
Is the vendor for the HVAC at Central, I'm sure there were the tight timeline, I guess I'm concerned about Perrin University.
Yes, we are on a very tight timeline, and I have expressed that to them today. So I sent out their PO that they needed to walk in straight in tomorrow and to get going. But I actually had talked to them on last Friday, only by phone because that's the only communication I had at that time, and they were aware and they actually had came out and seen what they needed to do, but I also needed to get that requisition to them before they could start.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
I know we've had some conversation just in our most recent policy committee meeting regarding the budget. In light of the fact that there's going to be some budget cuts over the course of the next two years, it might be a good idea for us to schedule a budget workshop.
Yes, I'm going to do that.
There's a normal budget review process that the board goes through, but this one might be a little bit more complicated than normal, so just want to put that on your radar.
Oh, yes, I was going to explain that to Mrs. Lila myself, because I'm having a date for that for Monday, for Monday, the 28th, because we have not had a finance meeting at all, nothing we have had, and we are almost, we are already in six months of the year. So we've not done anything, so I'm setting a date for the 28th of July, 6 o'clock.
Okay, I will be by Zoom on the 28th. I will have to be by Zoom.
Oh, well, we'll talk about that then.
Okay.
Because we're going to have to have papers and things, but that's one thing. Then another thing is, the board, I know you have given us copies of the six credit card reports, but what we would like to have is, because we don't know whose dollars is going where, you know, we've been talking about that. So what we're asking for now is a spreadsheet, just only for the year of '25, yeah, '25, to present, for all the six credit cards. A spreadsheet with my name on it, whatever money I used, my column, and if anybody's used that credit card, we'd like to have that person's name and the date, whether it was used for. We want all the dollars of a spreadsheet, my name, all the board members' names, whoever have a credit card, and we would like to have that by tomorrow.
That's not possible, in my book, due to the fact that I'm trying to close 2425.
But when can we get it?
It would probably be, it probably is going to have to be by the end of...
We've been asking for this for the longest.
Not that the spreadsheet part, the spreadsheet, I do believe that while I was out, y'all was giving the credit card statements, am I correct?
But the credit card statement does not break, a lot of stuff on there, like we said, is confusing, a lot of stuff on there I've not even used. Mercedes, did you say something was on your card you didn't use?
So we will work to make sure that that...
Mrs. Mercedes, did you say it was something on your card that was not used?
Yes, I received clarification from Lila.
Right, okay, so it's a lot of that kind of behavior. We don't, I know I ain't used nothing because I got my own credit card.
President Gibson King?
Yes.
My office will work with business and operations
Okay.
to get that spreadsheet to you in a reasonable amount of time.
Okay, one more thing, so you say you don't know when we can have this meeting?
No, I can do it by Zoom.
Oh, okay, that's what I said, I'll talk to you about that.
Yeah, I can do it by Zoom, but I just will not be in the district on Monday, the 28th.
But when can you do it?
I do not return back to the district till August 11.
August 11?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay, let's see what I'm thinking I want to ask you about. Let me think, I'll ask you, but that's it for right now. Anybody else have any questions for Mrs. Simmons? Okay, thank you. Now we go to the consent agenda. Are there any comments from the public for the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam President, make a motion to approve item five.
Motion made by trustee Rodriguez.
Second.
Second by trustee Gomez. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez? Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. Now we go to new business, 6.01, approval of the 2025-2026 Student Handbook. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion? Is there a motion to approve the Student Handbook, 6.01?
Madam President, make a motion to approve item 6.01.
Motion made by trustee Rodriguez.
Second.
Second by trustee Taylor. Are there any comments from the board?
Madam President.
Yes, trustee Gomez.
Thank you. There was a number of items that were brought up during the discussion, the work session of the 2025-2026 Student Handbook. I don't know that any of those were resolved, I've never heard any feedback, so I really prefer that we not move forward until we hear what transpired responses from the administration and the questions that were raised by the school board.
Were there any changes in it, Dr. Burney?
Yes, we're going to have our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Yen, come to address those changes that have been made.
Good evening, trustee superintendent, family, friends, guests. That's why, I don't know if you noticed me walking back and forth, I was trying to find the notes because I had it in the old student handbook, but they were addressed. An email was sent to attorney Harris, Snow, Jeremy, myself, we all worked on it. So if you look inside of the Student Handbook, you will notice that there are several areas where, let me see, where is the first one? I'll just go to page 11, for example. You requested that the board policies be placed in there. So if you can see on page 11, board policies have been placed in there, as requested. As the request of trustee Taylor, we also increased the sizes of some of the scope of consequence boxes, as well as put in in-school solutions in some of those places as requested by. Trustee Taylor, we also made, there were some type O's, those were also corrected, and I think those were the major things. If any trustee can think of anything that we did not address? The cover, oh, there you go, thank you, the cover, as you can see.
Yes.
So now I have to find a temporary compressor to go into, to H Central. So that's what I've been working on for the last two days. I have bathroom renovations going over there that's had a halt up until I can get some air conditioner in that building. And today I finally found a vendor that can actually step in and take over the project. As I was out, there was another vendor handling it, but at that time the vendor was not doing it in a more quickly way that I needed. So I reached out to another vendor today to take over the project. So we are on track now trying to find that temporary compressor so we can get the air conditioner totally going in the high school. We're also starting budget season for 2026. I have met with Mr. Dalton. He's requesting documents for going from this year into the next year. So we will have budget resolutions coming up in the month of August. We're also closing out 2425. So I have been working with Nelson this, this week, these three days to close out 2425. So it's kind of been, kind of busy in the finance that I have not been able to prepare the report, but we're looking to have all the reports done by Thursday morning before I depart. Any questions?
Any question from the board?
Madam President.
Yes, trustee Taylor.
Is the vendor for the HVAC at Central, are, I'm sure there were the tight timeline. I guess I'm concerned about Perrin University.
Yes, we are in a very tight timeline, timeline, and I have expressed that to them today. So I sent out their P O. that they needed to get to walk in, straighten in tomorrow and to get going. But I actually had talked to them on last Friday on the phone, only by phone because that's the only communication I had at that time. And they were aware and they actually had came out and seen what they needed to do. But I also needed to get them that requisition to them before they could start.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President.
Yes.
I know we've had some conversation just in our most recent policy committee meeting regarding the budget. In light of the fact that there's going to be some budget cuts over the course of the next two years, it might be a good idea for us to schedule a budget workshop.
Yes, I'm gonna do that.
There's a normal, you know, budget review process that the board goes through, but this one might be a little bit more complicated than normal. So just want to put that on your radar.
Oh, yes, I was gonna explain that to Mrs. Lila myself because I'm having a date for that for Monday, for this, for Monday, the 20th, the 28th. Because we have not had a finance meeting at all, nothing have we have had. And we're almost, we are already in six months of the year. So we've not done anything. So I'm setting a date for the 28th of July, 6 o'clock.
I will be by Zoom on the 28th. I will have to be by Zoom.
Oh, well, we'll talk about that then.
Okay.
Because we're gonna have to have papers and things, but that's one thing. Then another thing is, the board, I know you have given us copies of the credit, six credit card reports, but what we would like to have is because we don't know whose dollars is going where, you know, we've been talking about that. So what we're asking for now is a spreadsheet, just only for the year of 25, yeah, 25, year to present, for all the six credit cards. A spreadsheet with my name on it, whatever money I used, my column. And if anybody's used that credit card, we'd like to have that person's name and the date whether it was used for. We want all the dollars of a spreadsheet, my name, all the board members' names, whoever have a credit card. And we want to, we would like to have that by tomorrow.
That's not possible in my book. And due to the fact that I'm trying to close 2425.
But when can we get it?
It would probably be, it probably is gonna have to be by the end of.
We've been asking for this for the longest.
Not that the spreadsheet part, the spreadsheet, I do believe that while I was out, y'all was giving the credit card statements, am I correct?
But the credit card statement does not break, a lot of stuff on there, like we said, is confusing, a lot of stuff on there I've not even used. Mercedes, did you say something was on your card you didn't use?
So we will work to make sure that that.
Mrs. Mercedes, did you say it was something on your card that was not used?
Yes, I received clarification from Lila.
Right, okay, so it's a lot of that kind of behavior. We don't, I know I ain't used nothing because I got my own credit card.
President Gibson King.
Yes.
My office will work with business and operations.
Okay.
To get that spreadsheet to you in a reasonable amount of time.
Okay, one more thing, so you say you don't know when we can have this meeting?
No, I can do it by Zoom.
Oh, okay, that's what I said, I'll talk to you about that.
Yeah, I can do it by Zoom, but I just will not be in the district on Monday, the 28th. I do not return back to the district till August 11th.
August 11th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, let's see what I'm thinking I want to ask you about. Let me think, I'll ask you, but that's it for right now. Anybody else have any questions for Mrs. Simmons? Okay, thank you. Now we go to the consent agenda. Are there any comments from the public for the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam President, make a motion to approve item five.
Motion made by trustee Rodriguez.
Second.
Second by trustee Gomez. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez? Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. Now we go to new business, 6.01, approval of the 2025-2026 student handbook. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion? Is there a motion to approve the student handbook, 6.01?
Madam President, make a motion to approve item 6.01.
Motion made by trustee Rodriguez.
Second.
Second by trustee Taylor. Are there any comments from the board?
Madam President.
Yes, trustee Gomez.
Thank you. There was a number of items that were brought up during the discussion, the work session of the 2025-2026 student handbook. I don't know that any of those were resolved. I never heard any feedback. So I really prefer that we not move forward until we hear what transpired, responses from from the administration and the questions that were raised by the school.
Were there any changes in it, Dr. Bonet?
Yes, we're gonna have our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Yen, come to address those changes that have been made.
Good evening, trustee superintendent, family, friends, guests. That's why you, I don't know if you noticed me walking back and forth, I was trying to find the notes because I had it in the old student handbook, but they were addressed. The, an email was sent to attorney Harris, Snow, Jeremy, myself, we all worked on it. So if you look inside of the student handbook, you will notice that there are several areas where, let me see, where is the first one? I'll just go to page 11, for example. You requested that the board policies be placed in there. So if you can see on page 11, board policies have been placed in there as requested. As the request of trustee Taylor, we also increased the sizes of some of the scope of consequence boxes, as well as put in in-school solutions in some of those places as requested by trustee Taylor. We also made, there were some type O.'s, those were also corrected. And I think those were the major things. If any trustee can think of anything that we did not address? The cover, oh, there you go, thank you, the cover, as you can see.
Yes.
We just put the cardinal on there, made it simple.
I believe attorney Harris was the one who addressed this issue of having this in a folder versus a binder.
So, yeah, that was a suggestion. I think this version that you have is just for your own review right now, but ultimately if we were gonna provide updates throughout the course of the year, it's easier if it was in a three-ring type binder as opposed to it being spiral bound. But outside of that, just to piggyback on her comments, we did spend the better part of all day yesterday making sure that all the policy cross-references are there, and you'll see all the footnotes. It's throughout.
See some of them here now.
And once we receive your approval, this will, as I stated before, be translated into Spanish.
And from a timing point of view, it would be good if we could go forward with having it approved today so that the translation can occur and we're ready for the start of school.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam President, if I may?
Oh, yes, Ms. Taylor.
So I know the, the first intent or your first intent was to make it more student-focused. So I, I see you took the consideration or the feedback of putting the cardinal bird on there. I'm sure we could probably find some photos out there of some students that could be more student-centered, I mean, even the one that's on the screen right now or just left. I mean, I know, I know you took that as feedback, but I don't know if we needed to vote on it or, or what, but I.
If you all just vote on this part, so we can start the translations, and then we can give you guys samples of the covers.
Okay, I would like that, I would like that.
All right.
Yeah, there's also the back cover as well.
Yeah, I wanted to be more student-centered, and I do understand the concern for it to be diverse, to represent our entire community and all of our students, and that can happen. But as attorney Harris also pointed out, time is of the essence.
Yes, I agree.
And I like to say the statement, school starts tomorrow, even though it starts in a couple of weeks. So if you all can approve the verbiage part, and then we can give you samples of covers for front and back.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be fine.
That's fine, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Are there any more questions from the board? That's it, Mrs.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. 6.02, approval of contract renewal readable English for the 2025-26 school year. Are there any questions? Do we already have this, right? Or you just not giving this to us? Which one is that? That's just additional. Huh, additional, okay. Are there any comments from the board, I mean, from the audience? Can I get a motion?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve 6.02.
Motion made by trustee Gomez.
Second.
Second by trustee Rodriguez. Are there any comments from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. 6.03, approval of subscription renewal for Everway Unique Learning System for 2025-26 school year. Are there any comments from the, from the audience? Can I get a motion for 6.03?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve 6.03, approval of subscription renewal for Everway Unique Learning Systems.
Motion made by trustee Taylor.
Second.
Second by trustee Gomez, I mean Rodriguez. Are there any comments from the board?
Madam President.
Yes.
Just a little more information on this, I know we, we did discuss it at our work session, but some, some of the audience may not have, have watched that. I know this was a different system that we were using previously.
Just Miss Tammy Poles, if she can give us another breakdown.
Yeah, this is the curriculum for the Applied Skills Program that we've been using for quite a few years. It's just a name change, I think another company bought them out. This is the total curriculum and transition part, all the way up to post-secondary curriculum from pre-K all the way up. It's the alternate curriculum that is used to, it's aligned to the standards, and it's also aligned to the content connectors, which are the Applied Skills standards at their level.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. 6.04, approval of contract renewal with Fairhaven for 2025-26 school year. Are there any comments from the audience? Can I get a motion for 6.04?
Madam Secretary, I make a motion to approve item 6.04, approval of contract renewal with Fairhaven.
Madam President.
Just trustee Gomez.
I'll second that.
Second by trustee Gomez. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. 6.05, approval of contract renewal with Healthy Hearts, Healthy Minds for the 2025-26 school year. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion to approve 6.05?
Madam President, make a motion to approve item 6.05.
Second. Motion made by trustee Rodriguez, second by trustee Gomez. Are there any comments from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. 6.06, approval of renewal with Riser Source for 2025-26 school year. Are there any comments from the audience? Can I get a motion to, to approve 6.05, I mean, 6.06?
Madam President, make a motion to approve item 6.06, approval of contract renewal with Riser Source.
Thank you, and motion made by trustee Taylor, and second by trustee Gomez. Are there any questions from the board?
Just a comment, Madam President.
Yes, trustee Roger.
I just want to thank attorney Harris for reviewing all these items and putting it in his template format.
Not a problem.
Okay, thank you, lawyer. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. Approve, 6.07, approval of contract renewal agreement for gymnasts, too good for drugs for the 2025-26 school year. Are there any comments from the audience? Can I get a motion made for 6.07?
Madam President, make a motion to approve 6.07.
Second.
Made by trustee Gomez.
Second.
Second by trustee Taylor. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. 6.08, approval of contract renewal agreement for Healthy Link for 2025-26 school year. Are there any comments from the audience? Can I get a motion for 6.08?
Madam President, make a motion to approve item 6.08.
Motion made by trustee Rodriguez.
Second.
Second by trustee Taylor. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. 6.09, approval of contract renewal agreement with Mental Health America for 2025-26 school year. Are there any comments from the audience? Can I get a motion for approval of 6.09?
Madam President, make a motion to approve item 6.09, approval of contract renewal agreement with Mental Health America.
Motion made, motion made by trustee Rodriguez and second by trustee Gomez. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. 6.0, 6.010, approval of contract renewal agreement with Purdue Extension for 2025-26 school year. Are there any comments from the audience? Can I get a motion for 6.10?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve item 6.10, approval of contract renewal agreement with Purdue Extension.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Taylor and second by trustee Gomez. Are there any comments from the board? 6.011, approval of contract renewal.
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call, Madam Secretary.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. 6.11, approval of contract renewal agreement with Northwest Indiana Food Council for the 2025-26 school year. Any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion to approve?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve 6.11.
Motion made by trustee Gomez, second by trustee Rodriguez. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. 6.12, discussion of memorandum of understanding with United Way for the 2025-26 school year. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion for 6.12?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve item 6.12, discussion of memorandum of understanding with United Way.
Motion made by trustee Taylor.
Second.
Second by trustee Rodriguez. Is there any discussion from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. 6.13, approval of contract renewal, renewal with Girls on the Run for 2025-26 school year. Is there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion for 6.13?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve 6.13.
Motion made by trustee Gomez.
I'll second.
Second by trustee Rodriguez. Is there any questions from the board?
Madam Secretary, Madam President, just one.
Yes, trustee Rodriguez.
With regards to the memorandum between School City and Girls on the Run Northwest Indiana, have the, have the attorney review this?
Yes, and we actually used their format on this particular MOU so that we didn't have to go back before their board and delay it getting approved. So it's pretty standard and form, and I still recommend approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. 6.14, approval of professional development requests. Are there any comments from the audience? Yes. I will let Dr. Bonet explain it to you.
Yes, good evening again. So we are attaching whatever goal that aligns with the new business item with the recently approved strategic plan. So if you see goal one, that means that it aligns with academic supports, or goal two is behavior, emotional, and social supports, goal three is career pathways. So anytime you see any of those goals next to that, because that particular item aligns with that, this one aligns with goal five, which is on professional development and staff relations.
And, and you're able to get the strategic plan on our website if need be, or we can give you a copy.
We will have hard copies of our strategic plan ready for the start of the school year, approximately the first week in August.
Thank you. Approval of 6.14, approval of professional development request. Are there any comments from the audience? Can I get a motion for 6.014?
Madam President?
Yes.
I make a motion to table item 6.14.
Table, yeah, okay. Is there a second? Madam Secretary, roll call. There's no second, no.
So are there any other motions? That, there was a motion made, it was not seconded, so that motion fails. So the question for the chair, for the board is, are there any other motions?
Are there any other motions?
Madam Secretary, I make a motion to approve item 6.14, approval of professional development request.
Motion made by trustee Rodriguez.
Second.
Second by trustee Taylor. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez?
No.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
No. 6.15, approval of building and ground usage request. Are there any comments from the audience? Can I get approval for 6.15, please?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve 6.15.
Motion made by trustee Gomez.
Second.
Second by trustee Taylor. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. Approval of personnel report. Are there any questions from the audience? Okay, I got a question from the audience, several questions from the audience, okay. State your name, please.
Ten Monroe, 3831 Ivy Street.
Thank you.
I'm looking at your personnel report. There was a coach that we have that somewhat everybody don't understand what, what happened. But when you're dealing with kids, we need to understand this person is good for these kids, but he was never said guilty or anything. But we do have somebody that was guilty about something, and, and they really is a felon. But we gonna not have this guy coach our kids, which been here before and did a great job, and let a felon sit at our table, even though it was sponge, but he did it, he was convicted. And you guys gonna convict the guy that done nothing to help our, in helping our kids? I always tell you, kids come first to me, and I hear you guys say, kids come first. We have an opportunity to be decent this year than we was last year, and it's gonna grow. But this young man have served and did nothing, and we have one that served time. You guys need to rethink about this gentleman that I'm talking about, boy know who I'm talking about, and think about your kids first, because if we don't have this guy, you are failing the kids. You're felon. And it's not right to judge him on something he was not convicted on, when we got somebody that was convicted. And you guys think about that. Think about the kids, you constantly saying it over and over, do it. And don't mess up somebody's life because somebody else messed their life up. But people deserve second chances. Because the gentleman I'm talking about, the felon, he got a second chance. The young man that so-called whatever he did at another school and wasn't convicted or anything, he deserves a second chance. But the second chance that he deserved is to help our kids. The other gentleman, the felon, he's here to destroy the kids. And you guys really need to look into that and think about it. And think about these kids, and leave that personal crap to yourself and that scheming that he does for himself. Do not make this mistake, please. Thank you.
Senator Randolph, 4437 Alder Street.
Linda Randolph, forty-four, thirty-seven Alder Street. I am, just wanted to make comment, I hope that we have done our due diligence regarding the new principal for Lincoln, and I'm sure you have, I've done some research, and I'm excited about someone coming in with the experience and energy that the recommendation appears to have. And I also like to say that I have interacted with your recommendation for CTE, and I'm excited that East Chicago is bringing someone, hopefully, that has the experience. And I've watched this person interact in districts much bigger than ours. But my concern has been over the last few years, all the industry that we're surrounded by, we've got industry, we've got hospital, we've got colleges, and we're really low on the totem pole with what's happening with CTE. So I'm excited about, hopefully, a change that's gonna come with proven leadership. And if there's anything that I can do to assist, I've watched this individual from a state level and from a local school level, and I don't want to see our industries like the old Endless Steel and all of them going over to the suburbs of Illinois, putting up billboards on I-65, paying people ninety thousand dollars, when we're right here in this community, these businesses, and they're going elsewhere. Why? Because our children are not ready. They have not gotten those skills that they need to be considered. So I'm excited about what the future holds with your recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
Madam President, before you do that, there is one correction, just one correction. On page two, the second entry should read special ed pre-K teacher. It only reads pre-K teacher.
Page two?
Mm-hmm, page two. Well, the first page is just the cover, but yeah.
What page says, new, how it reads? What your page say?
It's item two. The first page with actual positions listed. On my end, it's got like a cover sheet, so. But the second entry, it reads, the job description reads pre-K teacher. It should read special ed pre-K teacher.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, I think this whole page has to be taken off.
Understood, I just wanted to make sure that you are aware that that, that's what that position is.
We're gonna talk about that, too. Okay.
Madam President.
Yes, trustee Gomez.
Make a motion to table six point one six.
Six point one six, oh, okay. Motion made by, trustee Gomez, table six point one six. Oh, can I get a second?
If there's no second, you can request another motion.
Yes, another motion, please, for six point one six.
Madam Secretary, make, Madam President, I make a motion to approve item six point one six, approve of personnel report.
Second.
Second by trustee Taylor. I need to ask a question, 'cause this needs to be pulled over, this one sheet, that's all.
Well, you can make, if you're looking to have one particular portion of the personnel report removed, you can make a secondary motion at this point, or have a secondary motion made, and then we can consider the removal of the item, and then go on from there.
Madam President.
Yes, trustee Taylor. Yes, trustee Taylor.
Disregard.
Okay. Okay, because this is gonna be discussed, as you are aware, so I need, this needs to be checked, this page here. So you said I need to make another motion?
You have a couple of options. Right now, there's a motion and a second to approve the personnel report as is, or if you want to modify it in some way, you'd have to make a secondary motion to amend it in some way, whether it's removal of a page or however you wanna amend it.
Okay, so I gotta get a vote?
You have to get a motion for it.
Yes, okay, Madam Secretary, roll call.
No.
Madam President.
All right.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'll make a secondary motion to remove items six, seven.
Oh, what page on the new?
It's, it's under the sequence numbers on the left, it's on page two.
On page two.
It'd be sequence number six, sequence number seven.
You say sequence what now, what number?
It'd be, the numbers on the far left, it'd be items six, seven, twenty-five, thirty-three, thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, thirty-seven.
And you would need a second for that.
Yes, can I get a second? So motion fails, right?
Yes, and we go back to the original motion, which has been moved and seconded, and you're, unless there's further discussion, you'd be ready for roll call. On the original motion, which is to approve the personnel report.
Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez.
No.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
No. Approve, six point zero, six seventeen, approve of first reading policies, employment of administration, use of medication, emergency medication, automatic extension defibrillators. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get approval for six point seventeen?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve six point one seven.
Motion made by trustee Gomez.
Second.
Second by trustee Rodriguez. Are there any questions from the, from the board?
Attorney, if you could just briefly describe each of these.
Sure, these are all updates to existing policies, most of which are required under state statute. The policy fifteen twenty further defines what an administrator is and the categories of administrators. There are, there are policies, PO eighty-four fifty-two, and, well, eighty-four fifty-two, which deals with the operation of automatic external defibrillators, which is a safety measure, and then there are two related policies, PO fifty-three thirty and PO fifty-three thirty point oh four, that deals with the administration of emergency medications, and adds to that list, the administration of Narcan to counteract drug overdose. So again, this is first reading, it'll come back before the board at the next meeting with any revisions that might be requested and for final approval at the next meeting.
Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes.
Madam President.
Yes, trustee Gomez.
I'd like to make a motion at this point in time to move on six point one seven to second reading.
So can we get a second reading, I mean, a second motion?
So in particular, it would be a motion to suspend the rules and proceed to approval on second reading.
So can I get a motion, Madam Secretary, roll call?
You need a second.
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 Okay, second from trustee Taylor. Now, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes.
Madam President, I'd like to now move to approve this for a final reading, second reading, six point one seven. Second.
Motion made, second by trustee Rodriguez. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. Now we'll go to our public forum.
If you could, please step to the podium and state your name and your address. Your comments will be limited to three minutes. Please be respectful of the board, the staff, and the audience members that are present, and please refrain from discussing any individual personnel matters or any labor negotiation matters. Thank you.
Is it Fannie first?
Oh, no, Madam first.
All right, good evening. First person to come up is Ms. Madeline Span.
My name is Madeline Phillips Span. My address is forty-nine, forty-two Euclid Avenue here in East Chicago. And I am a, I am the chairperson of the Friends of the East Chicago Public Library, and I'm here today to give the board and the listening audience the friend, the duties of the Friends of the Library in a little nutshell. The first, we, we have like three major functions, the advocacy, collaboration, and fundraising. With advocacy, we go out to the churches, community organizations, such as the board members here and this listening audience, and we try to encourage you, in the board's case, the staff, the children, to use the East Chicago Public Library. We want them to become familiar with the library and all its functions and attend its programs. In collaboration, the Friends of the Library, Friends of the Library collaborate in every, every program and activity that occurs at that East Chicago Public Library. We don't just advocate for it, we actually attend the functions and we work the functions. And when you become a member, we expect the same thing from all members, to not just say you're a friend of the library, but to come out and physically support the library. Now, we also do fundraising, because a lot of the programs that the library has is not covered by grants or their budget. And so we also raise money and not only collaborate them physically, we collaborate them financially. For example, we strongly collaborated with them for the summer program. And so any program that they may need collaboration with, either physical or financial, we help with. And as you see, we have beautiful shirts. And if you look around, we've got quite a few members of the library that attends your meetings. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Prinsella Askew.
Good evening. My address is two seven oh five East Guadalupe Circle in East Chicago. And I'm gonna piggyback from what Ms. Span stated. This is, and I know at the last meeting, you got the booklet of all the things that the library was doing, you should have this in there if you keep it, 'cause it's very important. Our summer reading closing celebration is gonna be Thursday, July twenty-fourth, from twelve to four P.M. in the parking lot of the main library. And at that time, those people will be acknowledged for the ones that read the most books, from the children as well as the adults. And I do believe the ones that did the reading, got the most, they will be getting T-shirts. But we do hope to see all of you there. 'Cause it's important to the kids to say, oh, there's my parent, or my aunt, or somebody, it really makes them feel good. And our theme for this summer program was Color Our World. There will be refreshments, music, walking tacos, bouncy houses, bingo, and we want you to sign up for your library card if you do not have one. It doesn't cost you any money. Now, to piggyback with me is Ms. Fanny Bishop.
I got the hard job, okay? Fanny Bishop, I live at twenty-one twelve Latuanica, that's in East Chicago, Indiana, and I work with the registration. So I'm getting people registered to become a friend of the library, and so all that money, it goes to all the programs that you just heard her talk about, okay? So if it's okay with the board, I was gonna pass out the registration now to you, but I know some of you are already friends of the library. We have lifetime membership, it's a hundred and fifty dollars, she can play one, one time, you don't ever have to pay anymore. Other than that, if you pay five dollars, we're gonna bug you every year to pay five dollars, okay? So if it's okay with the, the board, is it okay to kinda sit around and wait or solicit others here? Is that okay to do that afterwards, okay? And those board members who are not members, I'll be talking to you after the board meeting. Thank you.
All right, next on our list is Ms. Linda Randolph.
Linda Randolph, forty-four, thirty-seven Alder. I signed up before the meeting because my curious mind wants to know, why do we have lengthy work sessions, and then we come to the board meeting and they can be lengthy, and then items can be tabled and comes across again? Some of these items were on at least two work sessions ago, then it was on a board meeting, now it's here again. That's not being very productive and very responsible. And so I think we need to really use that work session time. You have lawyers sitting there, you got lawyers sitting here, so we have knowledgeable people at the table so that we can be more productive. And also, after hearing today how you handled a personnel report, if I'm, I guess I have the right understanding, the entire report is tabled. So we have aides and teachers, principals and all that won't be in place to begin the work of educating our children. Now, is that putting children first? We don't have a special ed director, we don't have this, we don't have that, I'm not gonna start naming all of them, 'cause you know them better than I. And is that's how we're gonna start a year being productive? I wanna end it with saying, trust the superintendent, you picked him. Trust that he knows what he's doing, because he does, and follow his lead. He brings to you the concerns of the district, he gives you the information, such as we've had the interviews and, and we've had a committee, and the committee feels this way. Can't we trust the leadership to do what's best? That's my question. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Kenny Coach Monroe.
All right, Kenny Coach Monroe, thirty-eight, thirty-one Ivy Street. I really would like to introduce myself to the trustees, because there's a trustee say who is Kenny Monroe, he don't do this, he don't do that. Well, my name is Kenny Monroe, they call me Coach Monroe. The reason they use that word, coach, because I'm involved and have been involved with kids for years. I do not get paid a penny when y'all see me at the games, when y'all see me at sectionals and regionals for twelve hours, when you see me other places, on the track field, picking up hurdles, when you, when you see me on the football field, when you see me doing a lot. But I don't know, everybody here know me, I don't know why there's one person claiming he don't know me. That ain't nothing but attacking dumbness, really. He's think he's too smart, but I'm a lot smarter. I will constantly donate my life to kids without pay. I'm not on one docket ever that you see, and I put in more time than any volunteer or anything. When you guys had the thing for the volunteers, I was looking for some high numbers. They got certificates for a hundred and twenty-four hours, a hundred, I do a hundred-plus hours in two weeks, and don't charge you nothing. I share advice with kids, I mentor kids, I be in their homes. That's who Kenny Monroe is. Now, if you don't even give me no respect, even look up, 'cause you ain't Now, if you don't even give me no respect, even look up, 'cause you ain't reading, it's all fake. But the thing about it is, I'm a better man than that. Let me show y'all I'm a better man. Friday, we're going to change the street and honorary Jesse Gomez people. I was in on that, but you don't take it out, I don't take it out on his people, because they were good people. Mom's a sweetheart. Brother was great, all that. So you push that to the side and you still handling your business. Some of us need to be better men and better people. Take it there. That's good. But I did do it for you, didn't I? And you will have that day Friday. Anybody would like to come out and do the ceremony to show you how much of a man I am? Thank you.
Next we have Ms. Renee Chavis. Chavis?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, next we have Mr. Graylin Gordon.
Yes, I passed it out, Graylin.
Yeah.
Okay. And just to confirm, Ms. Fannie Bishop, your name is on here twice. Are, did you have any other comments? You're done, okay. Then that concludes our public comment.
Thank you, uh, trustee Taylor.
Uh, just two items. Just wanted to let the community know that I attended, uh, CASB, which is California Association of Black Educators, out in Napa Valley, California. Um, this was sponsored by the National School Board Association, which, I'm the new chair of CUE, which stands for Council of Urban School Board of Education. They allowed me to, and at the first general assembly, they allowed me to say a few words. So I did talk about school city of East Chicago, where I'm from, born and raised, lifelong resident, and, um, and I've also talked a little bit about CUE and my position as well. So it was a great, it was a great three-day event. Everything was, it, um, they had over four hundred people, four hundred edu-, education, educators, and, um, including school board members from Texas, California, Arizona, Alaska. So these are individuals coming out as well from other states. So, um, and it was, it was a great conference, I had a really good time, um, meeting with the president as well as the chairman for the conference as well. Uh, item, another item I just wanna bring up, and hopefully we can clear this up in the future, but in regards to our personnel report, and, um, I believe, um, Ms. Randolph did, did hit it on the, on the button, uh, we discuss these personnel reports in work sessions, and the goal is for us is to have any concerns or any questions to be addressed at the work session. And if there's items that need to be pulled, um, that would, that would definitely be a consensus or comes to, to this board as well. But I believe when I left the work session, it was, everything was top-notch, no problems, and we're off to the next, off to this regular session today. So that's, hopefully we can clear, clean that up and address it a lot more clearly so that, that way we're not having to schedule special sessions to have items approved which should have been approved the week before. So. And that's pretty much it. Oh, I do wanna mention two other items. One is the, um, back-to-school rally, and I believe that is August second, Dr. Bornet. So, so our back-to-school rally, as well as our parent universities, on the same day, the times, the parent university times is from eight-thirty to ten, I believe. And of course, at eleven starts the back-to-school. And we have a lot of companies, a lot of stakeholders, um, just coming out and, and showing their contribution as far as free backpacks, free everything. So if you guys, definitely if you're parents, bring your, bring your child out and, uh, get him registered in their, their various schools as well as, uh, enjoy the fun. Um, there's gonna be music, there's gonna be food, there's gonna be hair cutting, uh, and also, um, there's gonna be some health, health, uh, and wellness, um, being done there as well inside the school. So we hope to see everybody there on August second. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Rodriguez. Trustee Taylor?
Yes. Good evening, and thank you everyone for coming out tonight. Uh, first I wanna start off with, we had an outstanding EC Central Alumni Week. So, thank you, thank you. Celebrating ten years of tradition and excellence of revitalizing our cardinal pride. Um, it, it's exciting because others are currently trying to duplicate what we have done, and it's not gonna happen, 'cause they are not like us. Special thank you to Dr. Bornet for supporting, um, our events. He was with us on the, on the dinner cruise, and he got on the dance floor. Um, he also came to the tailgate, uh, picnic, which we, we had an amazing time. Um, his presence meant a lot to the alumni, and there was expressed heartfelt appreciation for him being there. I also wanna give a special thank you to Mr. Corey Bailey and Coach Kenny Monroe, who were out there. They were out there ensuring that our grounds were kept clean, and they were, they had made themselves available to anything that we needed. They, they ran that cart rugged, just back and forth. So thank you again, um, for being there at our disposal. Also, I wanted to, just a reminder, the Legacy Ball, which is the unforgettable fundraising event that's gonna be held on Friday, August fifteenth, at the Hard Rock Casino. Again, our mission is to raise funds needed to replace the auditorium seats at East Chicago Central High School, which is a key step towards revitalizing our arts and music programs. On a not-so-positive note, unfortunately, we just experienced a second delay in moving forward with the personnel report due to what I believe, and I say this respectfully, um, in the case of overstepping our governance role. A secondary validation of credentials was requested, and those materials were submitted to us on July twentieth. Resumes have been sent on July seventh for our review. And after thoroughly evaluating them myself, I found them candidates, them, both those candidates to be quite impressive. Yet here we are, July twenty-second, still circling back with questions. And as, um, and I echo with what Ms. Linda Randolph stated and what trustee Gomez, I mean, sorry, trustee Rodriguez stated, um, you know, it's, it's, it's not, it's not a good use of our time or our taxpayer dollars. And I'll say that, and I'll say, and I say that because I want to gently remind us that each executive or special meeting outside of our regular sessions, those also carry a financial cost that are also charged to our operations. So I, I lean on my professional development opportunities, and I take advantage of them. And the guidance has been clear, the message has been clear, what my role is. That is, uh, set policies, govern and approve budgets, and again, hold this man accountable for operational outcomes. Let him lead and not to manage them ourselves. So I just wanted to put that out there. Let's continue working together, staying focused on our roles, and supporting effective systems that move our district forward for our children. They deserve better, and I am determined, determined to give them better. Thank you.
Yes, I wanna speak about, uh, a lot of things here that has not been taking place. As you all are aware, for so many of years before this board got here, I'm new on the board, as well as trustee Taylor. But a lot of things had not taken place. And what I'm trying to do is to bring all of this together. As a board member, a, an advocate that was sitting on the other side of the table where you all were at, and a lot of things did not happen. So, and, and there was bad reasons why they did not happen. And some, and, and some of these things are still not happening for that sign right there. See that sign? Children first. And when we get it, to know who is, we are voted for, who we were elected for, it was for our children. But we spent a lot of time on grown people, adults. A lot of time is wasted, a lot of wasted time. And it's not been wasted just now starting, it's been wasted a long time ago. But was it addressed in this manner? No, it was not, because other people are not seeing, they're seeing what has happened, but they don't wanna change, they don't wanna change, they wanna keep the same behavior. And when you keep on having that same behavior, you're not getting anywhere but accommodating grown people. That's who you're accommodating. And you have been doing that for a long period of time. The administration have not changed, but the kids do. They keep getting pushed, 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 and, and pushed on and not graduating, and they can't read, they can't write. There are nothing that our kids can do. But who comes up here and say any of that kinda stuff? Nobody. They just come in here and say what they want, or where they wanna go, at the expense of my tax dollars, at all our tax dollars. So they don't talk about those things, they don't say those things. And when it was, and, and, and when it was necessary for them to say those things, they did not. But when they come and say these things now, it, rest assured, we didn't heard that before. This is nothing new. So I wanna, my attorney here, as you said, that one of them said their attorney was here, yes, we go through these here work sessions, and it's not because of, when we have them, we as a board is always fault for something that somebody else does. We try to tell them beforehand, don't waste our time with this, but they bring it to us anyway. Then we have to clean it up, but they don't like it. But you brought it, you in charge here, do your job, be in charge, stand firm, do what is right, don't bring it to me. Because when I, you bring it to me, then that means that you have not done your job, you have not done what you supposed to be doing. So somebody spoke and said something about our attorney, Mr. Harris, please speak while this one sheet that I was trying to set down, and it's gonna, we, we, school gonna start right, but we gonna, this is the first time we gonna have it right. Everybody should be in place with the right credentials, right things that they need, no politics, no favor, or none of that stuff that our kids have been getting left out because of friendship, all these kinda things. So, Mr. Harris, can you explain to us, to the, to the people here and the audience on TV here and TV land?
I can.
Some of the reason as to what's been going on here.
Well, I think it-
And a lot of our time has been, and it ain't been wasted as far as I'm concerned, but I'm, I know I'm tired of it, I wanna move on.
I think, uh, thank you, Madam President. I think it would have been a benefit to have the discussion regarding the personnel report and some of the decisions that need to be made for the start of the school year, to have this conversation at the beginning of July as opposed to, towards the end of July.
Yes.
But be that as it may, I know that there were some concerns over the course of the last two weeks regarding the certifications held by certain people on the personnel report, some of which have been substantiated as to, you know, having proper certifications, but there are questions regarding the sufficiency of some of the other certifications, um, as well as how much time would be necessary for them to get the required certifications. In some instances, it will take a year, they're involved in certain programs, and the amount of information that certain board members need varies from board member to board member. Um, so could it have been done and put to bed at prior work sessions? Sure, it's possible. But every board member is different, they have a different level of information that they need, and this is where we are. So we have an executive session that's scheduled for-
The twenty-fourth.
Thursday, the twenty-fourth.
That's right, yes.
Specifically to go over personnel. Hopefully all the issues are discussed fully there. Uh, Dr. Bornet can review his plan thoroughly, and the board can consider shortly thereafter the approval of the personnel report so that we're ready for the school year. And, and that's where we stand.
Thank you, I appreciate that, you know, uh, because we don't wanna find ourselves being, uh, held back here, you know, we know school is starting real soon. But we wanna start it with, uh, but on a positive note, with the right people in place, not the same people, of the right people. So that's all I have to say. Uh, the next, uh, board meeting we will have would be August the twelfth.
Madam President?
Yes.
If I could just-
I'm sorry, uh, I'm sorry, just, I just went, forgot all about you.
I understand, and, and I, I understand where you're coming from, I, I, I feel the same way. I just wanted to make a couple of comments, um, um, for this weekend, uh, there are two activities going on. One is Saint Patrick's, uh, Festival over at Saint Patrick Church in the harbor, uh, that's from noon to ten P.M. and Calumet Day at Riley Park from noon to six P.M. So I'd encourage, um, the audience to, uh, join, uh, at, join together, I'm sure many of the board members will be there at one or the other of those. Friday, uh, there's gonna be a eleven o'clock A.M. at a hundred and thirty-ninth and Grand, if weather holds up, um, the unveiling of the honorary sign, uh, for my mom and dad, who were, uh, both city council members. And I'd like to thank, uh, city council for their, uh, support in that resolution, specifically, uh, Robert Garcia, who authored that resolution and who was the councilman of the district that both my parents sat in as council members. Uh, I'd also like to thank Mayor Copeland for supporting that, and city clerk Rich Medina for his, um, support on that as well. And then finally, uh, Naleo's National Association of Latino Elected Officials, Arturo Vargas, who trustee Rodriguez knows well, uh, is the head, or was the head of that organization. He just received a twenty-twenty-five president's award, and I'd like to congratulate him on that. But back to the point of where our kids are at, if you look at these scores, they've not changed one iota. So these scores just came out, and they're not where we need to be. So when we're talking about kids first, let's talk about this.
That's right.
And then we can talk about kids first. That concludes my remarks, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
I have one comment. Student-centered decisions in an educational context prioritize the needs and interests and goals of students individually and collectively. We're making choices about learning and instruction operations. I am disheartened and concerned that with the imminent start of the school year, a little over two weeks from now, that we will not have approximately six teachers in place, but also two key administrative positions, including an elementary school will not have a principal at the helm. One of our core values that was recently identified in our approved five-year strategic plan was qualified, uh, quality learning, rigorous, relevant, and student-centered instruction that prepares students for life, which our recommended CTE director is capable and more than willing to do. Our actions today risk qualified staff seeking employment elsewhere, setting up our students for a less-than-successful school year.
You said it, uh, Dr. Bornet?
Yes.
Yes, um, so, like, like I said here, we have to make change, you know? And change got to come real soon, because we have, a lot of cuts are coming, they've already come down. And this is the sad part about it, we have to wait right now to make a lot of changes when we gonna have less money. But there was a time we had a whole lot of money, but did, what did they do with their money? Our tax dollars. And we find ourselves in the same situation, going round and round and round. But I'm here to get it right. I'm not gonna sit down here on this board and sit down, well, I was sitting over there advocating for our children, I'm advocating from over here now, because they don't have a voice, we are their voice. And we have to do what's right by them. We all were children at one time, and we all got a good education. I wanna say I, we did. But now, it's like, it's, it's not even important. So that's what I have to say, and I'm gonna continue to, to say the same thing I've been saying when I was not sitting on this board, advocating for our children. Now I wanna make a motion to, yeah, oh, I'm sorry, next time meeting is, is August the twelfth at six o'clock here at the administration building? And I wanna adjourn, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Madam President? President, I make a motion to adjourn?
Motion, uh, made-
Second.
Second by trustee Rodriguez. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King?
Yes.